Okay, at this time I will call the special planning board, the planning board's special meeting for January 4th, 2023 to order. And we will begin with introductions and roll call, and I will start on my far left. And since we have a, I guess, indicate whether or not you're a planning board member or not, since there are folks at the table who aren't.
I am a planning board member. My name is Toni Horaro.
My name is Sally Daggett. I'm one of the City Auburn's new attorneys, and I've been making presentations today in the training session for you all.
Joan Blais, city staff.
Evan Seer, planning board.
Eric Cosens, planning department director.
Paul Jock, planning board.
Catherine Cook, city staff.
Stacy LeBlanc, planning board.
David Truss, planning board.
Amanda Correct, planning board.
Tim DeRoche, planning board.
Riley Bergeron, planning board.
Excellent. Item two on our agenda is a training on roles and responsibilities, legal obligations of planning board policies and procedures. This discussion will be led and presented by our city attorney Sally Daggett. Sally, are you ready?
Great. Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, everyone has a booklet in their, you know, book list, okay. That is meant to be a resource for you all, and I'm not gonna go over everything in it, there's quite frankly a lot in it, but hopefully, you know, if there are things in it that, um, you don't cover tonight, you still have questions about, then please get questions to Eric, and I will respond to them as well.
So Sally, I'm so sorry. As many people know, I'm a little hard of hearing, so if you don't mind just speaking into your, thank you.
Okay. Is this better?
Yeah.
All right. Sorry. So we're gonna do training. I think I am slotted for two hours, and I wanna make sure we need time for questions. The one caveat I have for you all is, because I won't notice, and I've already sort of asked Eric to help me on the lookout for this. I don't want you to ask me questions about pending applications, because that's not fair to applicants or the neighbors, and I won't necessarily know that you're asking me about pending applications. So that's the only caveat I have. Anything else is sort of fair game. So with that, I'll get started. I want you all to, let me just show a page. How many of you are brand new to the planning board? Okay, so good, good point. And how many of you have been on the planning board for three or more years? Okay, and everybody else is sort of in between. Okay, great. Well, it's good to have lots of diversity here, experience. Hopefully, you all will take this training as, it's meant to be, it's a way to improve your public meetings. And I think the, I've been practicing municipal law for over 25 years, so I've seen all sort of shapes and sizes of communities, and all different shapes and sizes of issues, some of them procedural, some of them more legal and substantive. But I've attended many, many planning board meetings in my lifetime, and I've seen things that work well and things that don't work so well. But I think that my, from my experience, that I think there are four points to an effective public meeting. Point one is for it to be legal. Make sure you follow the Freedom of Access Act. You follow your own local zoning ordinance. You follow whatever federal or state statutes may apply to whatever type of issue you have. So that's point one, is be legal. Point number two is to follow the proper procedures, because there are a lot of things that you, many things that you do that affect people's property rights. If you don't follow the right procedures, then that can be an issue both of fairness but of legality as well. The third thing that I think makes for an effective public meeting is to treat everyone equally and fairly. And you have to be very conscious of making sure that what you do isn't sort of prejudicing the one side of an issue to the detriment of another. And the fourth thing I think that makes an effective public meeting is to avoid disruptions. And I know you hopefully haven't had too too many meetings when it's kind of packed house, and you've had really, really angry people. It doesn't tend to happen in planning board meetings, but you never know. There can be some contentious issues. So those are my four pointers on how to have effective public meetings, including planning board meetings. So that all said, I wanna get started in your booklet. And just very, very basic point number one that you all need to understand as planning board members is that you serve in a quasi judicial role in most instances. In the majority of the work that you do when you're hearing an application, whether it's recital, special exception, zoning district boundary resolution issue, there's sort of two sides to an issue when you're adjudicating somebody's rights under federal, state, or local law. So what it means is to be sit in a quasi judicial role is that you're sitting as a judge, basically. You wanna, and that means you should only be basing your decision based on the information that you receive at the planning board meeting, not by conversations that you have, you know, with Eric outside of the context of a planning board meeting, which would be based on conversations you have with an applicant, with neighbors. It's you want to have your, you know, your robe on, your judicial robe, that you are sitting as a judge on a case where the applicant is one party, and there may be, you know, neighbors opposed to a project that are the other party to the proceeding. So that's, the majority of your work is as a quasi, is in a quasi judicial capacity, where you need to be fair and impartial to everybody involved, including your fellow board members. Meaning you don't have sidebar conversations outside the context of your planning board meetings about how to make applications or how you might vote on an application. That is all verboten when you're sitting in a quasi judicial capacity. There is one thing that you do that is really more in a legislative capacity, and that is when you hear, conduct a public hearing on zoning ordinance, either map or text amendments. That is more, that's more you're wearing your sort of legislative hat, but I still think it makes sense to, to still just consider yourself in your judge mode and just be basing your decision on what you hear and see at the planning board meetings and the information presented there, and not outside sidebar conversations. It just makes it easier for everybody, and it makes the process fair. So this chart on page six of the written materials is really just going over this distinction between sitting in a quasi judicial capacity versus a legislative capacity. And we'll stop there. Does anybody have any questions about that concept of being, sitting in a quasi judicial capacity now that you're on the planning board? Okay, great. There is an outline at the very front of the materials that is just again, sort of an overview of, there are lots of different topics that we could cover today. And I will try and work through the outline, but again, we want to make sure that we have time for questions at the end. So big picture, you just, you're either new to the planning board or you're getting a refresher course on what's important to a local planning board member. I think it's important to understand that there are different sources of law that come into play. There sometimes are federal statutes that will trump whatever state or local law we, you thought might apply. And this comes into play, for example, if there are any Federal Telecommunications Act applicable, you know, like a cell tower application. I don't, another instance is sometimes somebody will ask for relief from some ordinance requirement because they want an Americans with Disabilities Act accommodation. So there are sometimes federal statutes that might actually control, trump state or local provisions, because under the U.S. Constitution, what's known as the supremacy clause of the Constitution basically says, since the federal government is a sort of higher authority than state and local governments, that federal law will often control over state or local law. So just keep that in mind. There are a lot of state statutes that dictate what municipalities can do as far as local zoning. There is the state subdivision statute, which basically sets forth what the review criteria are for subdivision. They may be listed in your zoning ordinance, but the source of those criteria is from state law. Shoreland zoning, I don't know how many shoreline zoning applications you see. I think that actually the planning director gets to handle some of the shoreline zoning permits, but sometimes there are issues there, and that is all dictated by state law. Every, there's a state statute that basically says that all municipalities have to meet some minimum standards for regulating in the shoreline zone. And municipalities can be more restrictive than that, but they can't be less restrictive. So that's, if there's a conflict between Auburn's zoning ordinance and the state statute, then the state, through the main Department of Environmental Protection, may be, may say, you know, Auburn has to apply the state's statutory or minimum guideline provision as opposed to what Auburn's ordinance is. And periodically, the state updates its minimum guidelines, and so that means you have to have periodic reviews of your zoning ordinance to make sure your ordinance is in compliance with state law. For example, there, and I haven't actually checked your ordinance, but there's a relatively new requirement in the shoreline zone that are supposed to be photographic records kept of each property before a shoreline zoning permit is issued and then afterwards. We can, because there's been an issue obviously of things, you know, magically appear, and there's a big case pending in Raymond, if you've been reading the newspaper. So keep track, you have to keep track of your ordinance and make sure it's up to date and in compliance with state law. The third source of governing law is your zoning ordinance itself. Hopefully, I know, I saw Eric passing out some updates to the ordinance. That's great. You need to keep your ordinance up to date. It does, you know, the council does make changes every once in a while, so you do need to make sure you're looking at the most current version of your zoning ordinance. The board itself also has some policies and procedures, and these are in the written materials. They start on page 11. So if you're a new member, you ought to familiarize yourself with these. I'm not gonna go into these too too much tonight, other than to say that you ought to read them and that the policies and procedures themselves say that they're gonna be reviewed every February. And I think that that's something that Eric has asked me to take a look at your policies and make some suggestions for changes. So that, that issue will be coming back to you, maybe some potential changes to your policies and procedures. But again, for new members, you ought to, you know, read these. If you have questions, ask Eric. Eric is not, you know, he can ask me to get back to you on what's what. But that, all new planning board members should make sure they familiarize themselves with that. The other topic I wanna cover today for new board members is the Freedom of Access Act. This is, you'll sometimes hear it referred to as the right to know law. The federal analog to the main Freedom of Access Act is the Freedom of Information Act, or FOIA. But in Maine, the state statute is called FOA. So it's always a tip off, if some reporter is posing a FOIA request to municipality, that they, they're not quite, they're thinking about federal law, not state law. Well, that's a legal nicety that, just to be aware of. But the federal, excuse me, the Freedom of Access Act in Maine covers everything that the city council does, everything that the board appeals, the planning board, any local border committee is governed by the Freedom of Access Act, as are all state agencies. So it's important to understand these concepts, because to the extent you serve on any other border committee in Auburn, the rules still apply. And there are rules that govern both public records and also public meetings. And for the public records piece, I've done, and I've included in the written materials a chart of the questions that my office gets asked the most about the Freedom of Access Act. It starts on page 29. The big thing to understand is that pretty much all of the paperwork and all of the emails that go out, all of the communications that are written or recorded format are generally speaking, gonna be considered public records. So to the extent that the, there's the, you know, your agendas are public, your minutes are public, email communications with staff sending out packets. If you send an email to Eric, that's a public record. There's very few exceptions to what's a public record that don't really apply to the, generally speaking, to the business of a planning board member. And, but the most important point to take away is, as relates to public records, is that, you know, those email communications are all gonna be, that relates, if it relates to city business, then it's going to be considered a public record for the most part.
Okay, so I do have a question about that.
Sure.
So, so I have my notebook, and when we have public comment, I oftentimes take notes of what people say, like verbatim of what people say. Is that public record?
Yes.
So this notebook is public record?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a further question, or just clarification for everyone. I also work for the school department, and we have been forwarded more than once. And text messages were also considered a written record.
That's correct.
That's an important one to remember.
They're hard to retrieve, yes, but, and I don't know, since I'm new to helping out the city, I don't know if, let's, because this has happened in other communities, you know, big controversial projects, if some, whether it's the neighbors or developers, unhappy with what the planning board has done. First thing they'll do as a precursor to, you know, challenging whatever the final planning board decision was on an issue, is they'll do a Freedom of Access Act request. And they'll want, you know, any communications related to a particular application, and they will ask for communications, you know, from the public, by and between and among planning board members, planning board members and staff, developers, consultants and staff, it will be the whole universe. And generally speaking, those get handled by city staff. But maybe Eric can fill in. But the, it presents a, it's a major project to pull together all that information. And so they send, you know, you sent emails on your private computer from, you know, from your private email address. If it didn't get sent to somebody that's, you know, gonna catch, that has a city of Auburn email address, so it's captured on the city server, then you're probably gonna get asked by the city staff person, who's the point person on putting all the, pulling all these records together, to go and retrieve that email. So if planning board members, you know, and they shouldn't be doing this, but if they perchance did do this, are emailing amongst themselves on their private email accounts, but related to a specific application, you will get asked as part of that FOA response to produce that email, bring it into the city hall staff. And, and it's a major pain to, to do that. So Eric, do you want to chime in?
Yeah, just on text messages, we really don't use text to communicate about projects or city business. I mean, if it's, hey, I'm five, can be five minutes late for a planning board minute meeting, something like that is fine, but we should really never use text to discuss a project or an ordinance change or anything that's being discussed at the planning board level. And as far as emails, and maybe you'll cover this, we will quite often send out an email to the entire board that, hey, this is the agenda and the materials that are posted to the website. As a board member, we really need to refrain from any discussion about a project or that email. There shouldn't be any replies to all to have a discussion about that, that project. All of those discussions should happen within the planning board meeting. Or if you just have a question, missing a piece of information, let staff know, and then we can reply to that question and copy all the board members. But no active discussion via email from, amongst board members, because it's considered a public meeting essentially without, without the proper public notice.
Right. Like I said, there's both a public record and a public meeting component of the Freedom of Access Act. And so, and we'll talk some more about the public meeting part. But just so, big picture, what the, and I, this, the state statute requires that, and it's a relatively new amendment from just a couple of years ago. It used to be just certain municipal officials had to get FOA training, including all the municipal officers, like the city counselors and the public access officer. But the, the list of municipal officials who now have to get required Freedom of Access Act training has been expanded to include planning board members. Doesn't include Board of Appeals members, but I guess they go a little bit free on that one. But it does include you folks. And so there is a required, either you have to do it live, in person, through different courses, MMA offers, Main Municipal Association offers certain classes. But you can also do a self-study. And this training here is, it's, there's a lot of very specific kind of nitty gritty stuff about the, the required training covers that I'm not going to cover today, but I just wanted to cover the big picture issues. But I do wanna make sure that you all understand that if you've been newly appointed to the planning board, you do have to complete this required training. And there's a little certificate you have to fill out. You have to make sure that the city has it on file, because sometimes there will be audits of municipalities to make check, to make sure that all the required municipal officials have had their required training. And I think that if you've been on the board, say, for three years and you get reappointed, I think it's a good idea to do the training again as a refresher. And I think, I think it's, statute is a little ambiguous about whether that's required. I think it's probably required. That if you get reappointed, you ought to redo the training, because quite frankly, FOA gets amended, you know, every session by the legislature. And so it's good to make sure you're aware of what the current requirements are. So the big picture on the, the public records, just understand that anything that you sort of write, record, email, receive, that's gonna be, relates to city planning board business, gonna likely be considered public record. There are very few exceptions. So just keep that in mind as you take notes, as you send emails to Eric, that those are all likely to be considered public records and will be, need to be produced by the city if there is a request on a particular application.
And we will send out the link to the self-study course. And I know we had, I think, three board members last month do the main municipal training. Main municipal training has been pretty good, I think. Hopefully, it was informative. As those trainings become available, we'll send those out to board members. And let us know if you want to attend, and we'll pay that fee for the class.
But generally speaking, planning board members are gonna have to get into the nitty gritty of responding to FOA requests, but you may, you know, get asked to partake in certain ways if, you know, again, you happen to use, do some emailing that was on a private account that wasn't captured on the city server. So just keep that in mind. Try and limit that behavior. So as far as public meetings go, the big thing about public meetings under the Freedom of Access Act is that, you know, it's the people's business in, with the, in the people's house with the people's money. And so the, the policy behind the main Freedom of Access Act is that the people's business should be done in public. And so that, and so the public should be apprised of what's gonna happen, you know, in advance of it happening, and then, you know, like where the meeting's gonna be, what time, and where. And then the, the public is allowed to see and hear everything that happens at your planning board meeting. There, there isn't necessarily a right to speak at every planning board meeting and on every single planning board agenda item. But the people, the residents of the City Auburn, you know, neighbors from other communities have the right to come and see and hear everything that the Auburn planning board does. There are only very, very limited instances where the planning board might need to meet an executive session. That's a special part of a meeting in which the public is excused, but there have to be by statute very specific reasons to go into executive session. And only that specific reason that the board goes into executive session can be, you know, what's talked about in executive session. You can't say you're going into executive session to consult with legal counsel on some new lawsuit that got filed against individual planning board members and then have that morph into some discussion about another pending application that has a legal issue associated with it. So, but I, quite frankly, any advice that I would, generally speaking, be providing to the planning board is public. I make it very clear that, you know, my letters are, you know, to, they're to the planning board, but they're to be shared with the applicant, the neighbors, because it's not fair, you know, for nobody to be informed about what I've advised the planning board, because I might get something wrong. And people have a chance to, you should be entitled to respond to it and tell me that I'm wrong. So just understand that unless the letter or memo that I send says attorney-client privileged communication on it, it's meant to be a public document. So there aren't too many secrets that the city attorney's gonna have, you know, with the Auburn planning board. It's just, that's, that's not how it works. So keep that in mind as well. Just because the topic is sensitive and, you know, it doesn't mean that that's a basis to go in and talk about it in executive session. So generally, generally speaking, all of your agenda items are gonna be in public session. It's important to point out, too, that there's some terms of art related to public meetings. Generally speaking, public meetings, one where the public is entitled to notice, and, you know, the planning staff helps you with notice of all your meetings. But then you have different agenda items, and sometimes there will be a public hearing on your agenda. And then what the distinction is between a public meeting and a public hearing is, for a public meeting, the public has the right to attend, see and hear everything that's happening. But for a public hearing, the public not only has the right to attend, to see and hear everything that's happening, but they also have the right to speak. So that's what a public hearing is about. When you see that on one of your agendas, public hearing, that means that, you know, the public has the right to speak. It doesn't mean that the planning board can't adopt reasonable regulations about how long, you know, the public can speak, whether it's, you know, a five-minute time limit or three-minute time limit, or whether you're gonna allow the applicant space 20 minutes at the start of each agenda item to just explain the item. You, the planning board has the ability to, it's your meeting. You get to run it as you see fit. Because you want, you have business to get through. You have lots of applications to get through. So you can't have these public hearings that go on, you know, for hours and hours and hours. Reasonable regulations are perfectly permissible. But understand that when you see the public hearing agenda item, that means that the public does have the right to speak, not just to, to listen in to what's happening. Some communities allow public comment on every agenda item. Others say, no, we're having a workshop, and we're not gonna take any public comment during the workshop. Or they'll be, let's say you're working on amending your policies and procedures, and you may say that, that's our internal document. We, we wanna work on that without having input from the public, because that slows us down. We know what we want as far as how to run our meetings. So that's just, again, a policy decision for the planning board about how much public comment you wanna have on every single agenda item. But the public hearing agenda item, when that comes up, you know, the radar antenna should go up, say, oh, that's when the public has the right to speak. We can't say, no comment. We can't say, no comment for a public hearing. So just understand that. There are some special requirements too. You'll see in the zoning ordinance, sometimes there's a requirement of a public hearing and there are usually some specific advanced notice requirements. For example, if there are going to be some zoning ordinance, either text or map amendments that show up on your agenda, the state statute dictates certain postings of notice in advance. You actually adopted them into your ordinance, which is good, that you're consistent. Some communities like to do something more than what state statute requires and that makes it confusing, just because you have to do even more than you're legally required to. But for example, if there are going to be some zoning ordinance amendments, they have to be posted at City Hall 13 days before you have your public hearing. And they have to be in the newspaper, has to be a newspaper ad about your public hearing 12 days before and seven days before. And that's all required by state statute, it's also in your ordinance, but that's why, you know, it's important to make, for site plan or subdivision, there's some public hearing requirements, again, with some advanced notice requirements. And if the notice, you know, requirements don't get met, it usually means you gotta sort of start over. So.
So do you have a question? I'm sorry, totally hogging the mic here. And I won't ask you to like go over the specifics of it, it's like a 69-page document, but can you point out where we can find out where public hearings are mandatory versus like recommended?
Well, I would say you look at either in, in state statute, there's, for zoning ordinance, text or map amendments, there, a public hearing is mandatory, but it's also in your zoning ordinance as far as zoning, map and text amendments, because your ordinance basically incorporates state law. That's required by state law.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just add in addition, for site plan and special exception reviews, it's required by ordinance and I believe also by state law, but it is required by ordinance.
Yeah, there actually isn't a state statute on site plans or special exception, but so, but it's required by local ordinance in that instance. So, and I think for subdivision, I, most ordinances say, like for minor, the planning board may have a public hearing, but for major, it's shelled at the end.
Ours requires it for both and we are, we require a notification to a butters of, and we define butters as parcels within 500 feet of a project rather than the state law. I think it's just the immediate butters that are across the street. So we, we notify more people because of our ordinance requirements than are required by state law in most cases.
Okay. One thing I want to talk about, this concept of public meetings is, again, that you're to base your decision as planning board members on the information you receive at your planning board meetings. And that is, I want you to be alerted to the concept of what's called an ex parte communication. And that basically is the, some sort of communication that takes place outside of the context of a public meeting. So let's say that Stacy runs into the engineer for a developer who's got a pending application in front of the planning board, it's going to be, that application's going to be on the agenda next Tuesday night, and the developer's engineer starts, you know, chatting with Stacy about, oh, I'll see you on Tuesday night, you know, we think our project's been really well done, there's a little bit of an issue about traffic counts, but we think we've got it covered, you know, what do you think? And Stacy inadvertently gets duped into this conversation with the developer's engineer about this pending application. So that would be considered an ex parte communication. And it's not, you want to try and avoid those, again, try and avoid talking about planning board applications outside of your planning board meetings, but it's not the end of the world. If that happens, how that, if, you know, conversation should be handled is at the start, on the, on the next Tuesday night, when that agenda item is reached, at the start of the agenda item, Stacy should just disclose that she bumped into the developer's engineer at the grocery store on Saturday morning, a little bit of conversation here, the gist of the conversation was X. And then, that way everybody knows, the planning board members, applicant, you know, opposing neighbors, everyone knows that conversation took place and they can respond to it if necessary, if they think necessary. Just to make it fair, again, you want everybody to have the same information. And if Stacy gets some information from the engineer at the grocery store, you, you all should be share that same information. And the same is true, and I know this is tricky, but it goes to, for city staff as well. If you get your packet, your planning board meeting packet and you are reviewing it and you, you know, decide on Monday morning, you have a bunch of questions that you wanted to ask Eric about, you decide you're going to call Eric up and ask him all these questions, that too is an ex parte communication. You're talking about the substance of the application outside of your planning board public meeting. And so that, what that colloquy was between you as a planning board member and Eric should be then, as you're, as, when that agenda item comes, first of all, you should try and avoid that conversation, but I know it's hard for Eric to say no and Catherine and John as well. But if you're talking about the substance of an application outside of the meeting, again, when that agenda item comes up, the, whether it's a planning board member or Eric, you should raise that, that issue that, you know, Eric can say, I received a phone call from a planning board member and this is, you know, they had the following three questions. And, and state what the question was and what the answer that was given, because quite frankly, some of your fellow planning board members may have the exact same questions, but also what if Eric, you know, made a mistake or the planning board member, you know, misinterpreted what Eric said and then has sort of different information than everybody else? So it's, again, this, back to my, one of my three or four, you know, things that make an effective public meeting is to treat everybody equally and fairly, and that is in part making sure everybody has the same information to base their decision on.
So I have a, a specific question with regard to that. Several years ago, the planning board implemented something a little bit different where the chair and vice chair would meet with city staff to review an agenda ahead of a meeting. And the purpose of that is to make sure that the presiding officer knows what's going to be on this meeting well in advance. It's also an opportunity for the presiding officers to ask questions like, all right, recently, when we've had applications, parking has been a question, can we make sure staff really addresses that upfront instead of waiting for a member to ask? So those sorts of things, not necessarily, at, at what point does that cross over to a substantive question that, that really should be?
Is this agenda setting or is this, you have applications that are pending and the chair, the vice chair are meeting with staff to prepare for the planning board member to talk about the specifics of an application?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Is it just, are you meeting with staff to just say, okay, we've got these applications and this one's kind of complicated, so we're going to put that first on the agenda because there's going to be a lot of public attention, so we're going to do that one first, but without talking about the substance of it, just where it's going to be on the agenda, what it might involve, what, who needs to be present as far as speakers, is it going to draw a big crowd? Or, so is that what this meeting is about? Or is it more the staff giving a, sort of an overview of each of the pending applications that are on the agenda so that the chair and the vice chair have a sense of what the application is about?
I would say it's much more the, the first one, but again, occasionally there will be something where an application doesn't actually get discussed, but staff might say, you know, in reviewing this, something came up, so be aware that we are going to be presenting that in our presentation, sort of thing. So there's nothing that gets discussed in that meeting that, that doesn't get discussed in the public meeting and it's not a brief on the individual applications.
It sounds to me that it's more just sort of agenda setting and preparing the chair to, for what's ahead, but without getting into the substance or the merits of an application. But if it's my latter example of, you know, the staff giving a little bit of an overview of the merits of an application, then I'd be more concerned, I would be concerned about that.
Yeah, no, the, the merits are not, are not discussed, it's really more of a, a clerical.
I think we're sort of, we're sort of drawing that line as we may have the applications in front of us as we set that agenda and the chair may say, I want to make sure this is addressed in the staff report, make sure you address that in the staff report, but it ends up being part of the, the meeting.
Okay. And, and everybody, and your staff reports are made available to the applicants and to the public generally. Yeah. Okay. So any questions about public meetings? I will just point out that in the written materials, starting on page 33, to the extent you want to know more about electronic communications and the Freedom of Access Act, or from the public records as well as the public meetings standpoint, there's more information in the materials. I'm not going to sort of go through that. Another thing, the, issue that implicates the Freedom of Access Act is site visits. I don't know, how often does the planning board go on site visits?
Not often, but we do have to do the public notice for those, the, the vice chair butters.
The point is that they are, if the planning board wants to do a site visit, that's perfectly permissible, but it has to be noticed as a public meeting. So it's, you have to notify the applicant and notify any interested neighbors. And site visits can be troublesome because they're ripe for a whole bunch of like mini ex parte communications, like everybody, you know, you know, all the planning board members and the neighbors and everybody, you know, these little sidebar conversations, everybody, there's a little bit of, you know, information gathering that's, you know, you know, certain board members are getting their ears chatted up by, you know, some neighbors and others by other neighbors. And so they're ripe for sort of these ex parte communications that are troublesome. So the one thing that, and I know this is hard, that what you should not be doing or what I call the, the drive-by site visits. You get a, your planning board packet, you know, you know, you're looking at it over the weekend, you think, oh, I think I'm familiar with the site, but I'm not quite sure, maybe I'll just go drive out there when I'm doing my errands on Saturday morning. That's considered a no-no, and there are actually several court cases in Maine on that very point. And I know that this may sound like something that, you know, you're not used to doing, not looking at the sites on your own over the weekend before an application, but it is a no-no because in part you, you know, are getting information that the rest of the, the board is not. You may also inadvertently have a conversation with the property owner about, you know, while you're out on site, or you may even look at the wrong site. That actually happened in one of the board cases. So if you, if you as a planning board member think an application, you know, involves some big project and you want to do a site visit, it's perfectly permissible to, you have to do it as a planning board and notice it and invite, you know, the applicant and the neighbors, so.
So quick question, do you have to do it as a planning board or can I just say, as a planning board member, I am choosing to go do this on my own?
You do not want to say, as a planning board member, you want to do it on your own. That is a no-no. If you want to do, if there, if you as a board member want there to be a site visit, you have to go as a planning board with proper advanced notice to the applicant and the neighbors. No, no drive-by site visits. And I know that that may, is, you know, comes as, you know, really, and yes, really, there are court cases on this.
I haven't had this come up, but it's something that I've worried about on site visits. If we were having a site visit where you're walking around a large site, is there a requirement for accessibility for members of the public on a site visit or?
I think you, you try your best to have a reasonable accommodation, but the way, if there's somebody, you know, just the site itself, you know, is not yet, you know, handicapped, accessible, what you can do is you can videotape the site visit. That's what we've done in some instances when there have been folks who have not been able to actually go onsite. And sometimes the site may be too dangerous and the planning board members aren't even allowed to, or, you know, so you may have asked the, you know, the developer to go and take a videotape. That's the thing with, you know, the digital cameras and videos these days, you don't really as a planning board necessarily need to go on a site visit. There are ways to get that information if you really want to look at a site with aerial photography as well, so, but some, you know, smaller communities, they, they like to go out on site visits because they're not above the top, so. So that's all that I have on public records, public meetings. I'm going to move on. Go ahead.
I, yeah, my question real quick is, would it be a good idea to videotape a site visit even if like we haven't gotten a request for accessibility or to see it in case like we might after, I just hadn't considered.
I think it's helpful because sometimes there'll be planning board members who can't make it and the only way they can really sort of know what happened and, and the, the thing about site visits is they're sort of analogous to what happens in court cases when there are requests for review. That's like the court's terminology for going on a site visit, it's a request for review. But the, the rule about site visits is not really supposed to be information gathering for the planning board members, it's supposed to help you better understand the information that's being presented. But I think certainly if you know that, if the planning board decides it wants to go on a site visit and there are some members who can't be there, I think it's a good idea to tape-record it so that, again, in fairness, you want all planning board members to have the same information. Okay, thank you.
Are you, are you suggesting then that, that it always be done? I think which was what the question was, because I didn't know if by any time there's a site visit, we're going to record it, if that provides a legal, if, if there's a concern, legal concern by suddenly having that always be something that's available and by not having it unless it's requested, is that a stronger legal stance?
I, I don't think it's, it's legally required. You know, some communities quite frankly don't have the logical capability, but I think what, or any instance when a planning board takes a site visit, I think it's always helpful that at the next meeting after the site visit, that somebody, whether it's the chair or the, one of the city staff members says, provides a statement on the record of what happened on the site visit, sort of where you went, what you looked at, just again, in case there are some members who were not able to make it. Or if, I don't know, the applicant or the neighbors want to, you know, they have a different view about what was observed on the site visit. So that, I, I think that is a very good practice, but I don't think that recording, you know, video of a site is mandatory, it's just helpful if, you know, sometimes there are big projects and, you know, there's a lot of, you know, interest, both public and planning board members as well, and, you know, maybe somebody just has a, you know, a conflict and they can't make it and they really want to, so I think, you know, it's a good, they, good practice, but it's not legally required.
It's rare that we do site visits. I can only think of maybe two in the last 10 years or so, and they're mandated for new gravel pits or mining operations by our ordinance, so we do it for those.
And I wore the wrong shoes at the last one, by the way, so I remember it.
Okay. So as, as far as, this is sort of an issue that comes up all the time, no matter, you know, whether it's a planning board, city council, Board of Appeals, conservation commissions, thing, these concepts of conflicts of interest and bias. So if you're looking at the outline in the front of the written materials on page two generally speaking, you, you got appointed to the planning board so that you could hear and decide applications, you can hear and make recommendations on zoning ordinance amendments, and you are not supposed to duck issues, applications based on conflicts of interest or bias that may be sort of, you know, exaggerated to avoid making tough decisions. So generally speaking, board members have been, you've been appointed to the planning board so that you can hear and decide applications. There are some instances where a board member has either a conflict of interest or they have a state of mind, so they can't be there and impartial on an application, so they need to be recused. And a recusal is usually when the issue And a recusal is usually when the issue is so obvious that, you know, it's your spouse who's the applicant in front of the planning board, that, you know, you say, I'm going to recuse myself on this because, you know, look, obviously the applicant is my spouse. But there are other instances where you may be excused, but this is a determination that's not made by you as the individual planning board member who may have a conflict of interest or have a state of mind that makes it impartial and not impartial on an application, that where you may be excused by your fellow board members, and we're going to talk about what the process is, and in what instances you may be viewed to have a conflict of interest or to be of a state of mind such that you should not be hearing and deciding an application. So on page two, outlined at the top of the page, there's this concept again of conflicts of interest, and it gets a little complicated because there are two different sources of conflicts of interest. There are conflicts of interest that are defined by state statutes, and we'll talk about those, and there are also some conflicts of interest that are sort of dictated by what's known as the common law of meaning, or judgment law from court decisions. There've been situations that arise and there's been an allegation of conflict of interest, and then the courts have made a determination about whether that particular fact pattern constituted a conflict of interest. And so for conflicts of interest that are dictated by the state statutory test, I've included in the materials, you'll see on pages thirty-eight, thirty-nine, the statutory test, which is very, very specific relating to sort of having a business interest in an application or a personal financial interest. And you can see in the state statute, page thirty-eight, subsection number four, about direct or indirect pecuniary interest, that means, it's a fancy word for financial. And so the statute talks about when you have like an ownership interest of 10% or more in the business that's the applicant, the entity that's the applicant. And the other, so that's sort of the personal financial interest, the other sort of direct or indirect pecuniary interest is if you're an officer or director of the corporation or entity or LLC that's appearing as the applicant. So those are pretty straightforward. The state statute also talks about though, and this is on page thirty-nine, subsection six, about every municipal official shall attempt to avoid the appearance of a conflict of interest by disclosure or by extension. And so that's sort of a catch-all under state law that is sort of saying, if it, if it doesn't look good, then it probably isn't good and you should probably raise the issue, we'll talk about, and then let your fellow board members decide about whether you can sit on that particular agenda item. So that's the state statute definition of conflict of interest. There's also, again, as I said, there's this case law test, and there's a relatively old case from nineteen thirty-one that everyone sort of relies on, because I think it articulates what the test is under the common laws, sort of the catch-all rule. Is, as a board member, are you being put in a situation where your own, you have to serve your own personal interests to the prejudice of the interests of the city of Auburn and Auburn Planning Board? Basically, are you being put in a situation where you have to wear two hats? One is your personal interest in an application versus your obligation to the planning board to be fair and impartial to the, all the parties to that particular proceeding in front of the planning board. And so that's what's more the common law, common law definition of conflict of interest. And these conflict of interest issues, they come up relatively frequently, but they shouldn't, you know, that's a good thing that they get disclosed and discussed and so everybody knows about them and deals with them. Courts, review of courts will give great deference to whatever the planning board decides about whether a board member has a conflict of interest or not. But it's best, again, my theme of you want to be fair and impartial and inclusive of everybody, and that means, you know, if there is some issue about whether you should be sitting on an application, you as the board member want to raise the issue and then let the rest of the board members figure it out about whether you should be sitting on an application. So again, included on page two is sort of the little step-by-step, is how to handle a conflict of interest. So let's say that Tim is very involved in the Auburn Land Trust, and the, the land trust has taken a position on a particular application that's pending in front of the planning board. And Tim pays his dues as a land trust member, but he wasn't really, he's not, wasn't involved in the executive committee of the land trust deciding that it was going to oppose this planning board application. So then the planning board application comes in front of you all and Tim's not quite sure what to do. What Tim should do is, he's like, you know, I'm a member of the land trust, I do, I'm very involved, but I'm not on the executive committee, but I go to a lot of their meetings and events. The executive committee has voted to oppose this planning board application in Auburn, but I wasn't, you know, I wasn't directly involved in that decision, you know. So Tim first should disclose, you know, that there might be potential conflict of interest there, and then he should state on the record whether he thinks he can be fair and impartial. You know, if Tim really, you know, agrees with the land trust official position that, you know, this project, that this project should not be approved by the planning board, then I think at that point, Tim absolutely has a conflict and, you know, should not be participating. But if he thinks he can be fair and impartial, then he should say so. And then the remaining board members decide whether Tim should participate on that particular agenda item. That's, so that's the process, is you as the planning board member want to be the one to raise the issue. It's not, you don't want some from the public, one of your fellow board members sort of sharpshooting you, you want to raise the issue. Disclose what the issue is, your involvement, state whether you can be fair and impartial, and then you be quiet and let the remaining, the balance of the board make a decision.
That'd be something along the lines of, an application comes across to the board and happens to be my employer, that would be, hey, everybody, this is my employer, I probably shouldn't be involved in this.
And I would say it depends, these are all very fact-specific, because if you work for some humongous company that has...
Work for a local mailroom.
Okay. Well, again, it's all going to depend, I mean, it's not just that it's your employer, it's, you know, it's, yeah, it's my employer, but the company has 5,000 employees, I had absolutely, I have absolutely nothing to do with this, then I think it may be okay. But again, it's going to be the balance of the planning board that decides the issue. So it's disclosure and provide enough facts, you know, to help inform your fellow planning board members about, you know, is this an issue or not? Because again, remember that, and I know you have alternate members, but you got appointed to the planning board to hear and decide applications, and when there isn't a full complement of board members, then it makes it harder for an applicant to obtain the necessary majority vote for an application to be approved. This comes up a lot with some smaller, I mean, it's nice you all have, you know, you have a big planning board and you have alternates, but if you had, you know, a three-member board and, you know, one of the members has a conflict of interest, that means that two people are deciding, you know, whether to approve something, and they have to vote, you know, they both have to agree to approve it or else it's denied. So just, it makes it harder on applicants when there isn't a full complement of board members, so.
Can I just point out, we require four affirmative votes to pass an application, so if you only have five members, that's a lot harder to get than if you have seven members acting. And we've typically asked planning board members if your spouse is applying for a planning board approval. You know that before we do, we typically ask them to check with staff, give us the facts, and then if we need to, run that by you as our council. Is that a good process if board members know ahead of the meeting that they may have a conflict?
Yes, oh, absolutely. The other, and I don't know what you all do for work, but I know that, you know, there are a lot of lawyers and engineers and that type of thing that, you know, may be serving on these boards, and it may be that, I know this happens, when their lawyer, you know, at law firms, that when they serve on planning board design work, they may have to be getting the agenda and doing a conflict check at their law firm or engineering firm to make sure that, you know, the applicant is not some client of the law firm and appearing in front of the board, so.
Well, you'll receive agendas the week before the meeting, if that comes up, feel free to contact John, Catherine, or myself, and run the facts by us, that we can either give you advice, or if we need more advice, we can contact someone.
Yeah, just to give everybody a heads up, it just makes it easier, then there isn't, you know, you all aren't, you know, hearing the issue for the first time at the meeting and nobody's really prepared to address it, so. And again, these are tricky, the issues, and they're very, very fact-specific. I can sit here and tell you, there have been lots of different, you know, situations, and again, ultimately it's disclose and let, you know, state whether you can be fair and impartial, and let the balance of the board decide. So I know there have been a lot of communities that had, were dealing with the CMP corridor project, and in some of these small towns, you know, there were very strong feelings one way or the other on the project, and that got into more of the issue of bias, and I guess that's transition to the next topic, of bias of sort of state of mind, such that you don't, you really should not be hearing and deciding an application, because you already made up your mind about the topic. But I've been surprised, you know, different planning boards have sort of, some have been real hard-nosed about not letting folks who were, you know, either sign the petition to get the issue of the CMP corridor project on the ballot, that, you know, that may have been okay, others may have had lawn signs, others may have been real advocates, you know, in opposition to the CMP corridor project, and they, you know, were determined to have a conflict or to basically have bias and to be not able to sit, but some of the ones who just had the lawn sign that they were given by their neighbor, you know, that they hadn't really made up their mind about the project, you know, that's probably okay for them to still participate. But again, they're very fact-specific, and that's why disclosure and vetting it and then letting the balance of the board decide. You as the board member should not be the one to say, I have a conflict, I'm not, you know, participating, so. And biases, again, is if you have a state, you know, your state of mind is such that you've already made up your mind on this particular issue. I know in some communities where there's a municipal school department, you know, this came up in one of our communities, where there was a planning board member who just didn't like the school department and didn't like, want this new school to be built, and so was just opposed from the project from day one, and then the school department had to come in front of the planning board for some site plan approval. And so I think it was very clear that that planning board member was biased against the applicant, and so it was appropriate for him to recuse himself on that basis. But if that planning board member had thought he could be fair and impartial and said that, then, you know, it would have been up to the rest of the planning board to decide that. But again, these are tricky issues, and you want to disclose and let the balance of the board decide, so. I think we can turn to page three of the outline about meeting conduct. We talked a little bit about your policies and procedures, so everybody's hopefully going to look at that. You may be wondering as a new board member, do you need to know about Robert's Rules of Order, the parliamentary rules? And the short answer is no, you just need to know generally how to, you do not need to be able to cite chapter and verse of Robert's Rules of Order. But I have put in the written materials a chart, it's on page forty-seven, of what I call the really basic, how do I ask to go to the bathroom types of motions?
I did not just ask, by the way, I went, sorry.
So, so on page forty-seven, you can see, you know, if you want to end the meeting, you know, you can see what motion you need to make, I move that we adjourn, and then you walk through this chart about, does that motion need a second, you know, is it debatable, can it be amended, what type of a vote is required in order for that motion to pass, and then can the motion be reconsidered? So these, again, and then the second, I think this is kind of one of the most important ones is to, how do you ask to take a break? You know, I move that we recess. That's different than adjourn, adjourn is to end the meeting, but to recess is to take a break. So just take a look at this if you're a new board member, even if you're an old man, just, I think this is a helpful tool just to get you, you don't, you don't want parliamentary procedure to be an obstacle to running your meetings efficiently. But it doesn't come up quite so often with planning board members, but it does come up like more so, I'd say, with the city council, but when motions start getting amended, and you want to, and things can get confusing about, you know, there's, you know, a motion's been made and then there's been seconded, and then another planning board member moves to amend that motion, you want to make sure that then, you know, there still needs to be a second for the amendment, you need to then discuss and debate the amendment, and if the amendment passes, then you go back to the main motion as amended. But you want to make sure as a planning board member that you're, if you're confused about where things are as far as the motion and the amendment, you want to stop and ask some questions because, and even ask to have, you know, the motion or the amendment repeated, because, and you shouldn't be shy about that, because it does get confusing, and you have to sort of work backwards, you know, from, you know, the amendment, dispose of it, and then, then you're going back to the main amendment, the main motion as amended, and then somebody might make yet another amendment, so then you got to deal with that, you know, new amendment. But I find that planning board members, you know, get the most, or board members in general get the most sort of tied up in knots is when there are lots of amendments and everybody starts to be confused about what's happening, and that's when people sort of vote, like, they're confused about what they're voting on, and then they go home that night, I'm not sure, you know, what I voted on. And then, you know, then the next morning, it's like...
Definitely happens. I was going to say, yes, that does happen sometimes. I'm like, wait, did I just vote the wrong?
So, you know, should I ask to reconsider? You know, so again, don't be shy, if you're, and it's also, I think, while the chair is sort of running the meeting, it's your meeting, and so you should not be shy about saying, you know, saying, you know, planning board, this is the chair, or madam chair, I'm not, can you restate the motion that's on the floor and where we're at, just so that it's better to ask for clarification than to raise your hand and then have second thoughts afterwards about what you just voted on?
I would just add that we have to get this right in a minute, so what we'll do as staff is try to keep track of each amendment and amend the original motion text, and then Evan will quite often ask, okay, now can you read the final motion with all the amendments, to make sure, we'll try to clarify that, but don't, don't hesitate to ask us for that clarification.
No, no.
Before you vote.
Exactly.
Okay, so I'm going to make an amendment to your grid here. So it says, end all debate, debate, force a vote on a motion and/or amend a motion, and it says you may not interrupt the speaker. So I come from the corporate world where we interrupt people all the time, so I am like, if you are in that kind of quasi spiral of amending amendments and over and over, when can you interrupt and just call, call it?
Oh, that's a different concept than interrupting, what, if you want to call the question, that's, that means you want to call for a vote right then and there.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's what you're referring to. I can tell you this column about may you interrupt the speaker, I think, there's some yeses and some noes in these columns, generally speaking, you just want to be polite and respectful of your fellow board members and let them finish whatever it is that they're saying. But again, you know, the, I have not seen this rule about when you may or may not interrupt a speaker be enforced, but it gets to... the speaker be enforced, but it gets, that's too much for most administrative, local administrative boards to start policing, quite frankly. That, you know, may be a big deal in the legislature in Augusta, but not at the Auburn Planning Board, so. Again, this is supposed to be simplified, and even, it's probably more than just a simplified chart, with that little column about interrupting, the ability to interrupt the speaker or not. I think what you mostly want to find out is, does it, does it need to be a second, and then can you debate it? And then, you know, what the majority, what the vote requirement is, so. Okay, any other questions on sort of parliamentary procedure? Okay. I have in the written materials, and this actually happens to be a sample from a Board of Appeals training, but on page forty-three and forty-four, I have a set of simple opening remarks, and I don't know what your practice is, Eric, as far as at the beginning of each meeting, does the chair sort of lay out what's going to happen, and how the meeting's going to proceed, and what the future is?
As well as at the beginning of each item, or...
Good, okay, I just think that, it's hard, my theme about being inclusive is to let everybody know what you're doing, and who they need to, some people, it's the first time they've been to the Auburn Planning Board, and they don't know, they don't really know who's in charge, who they should be asking, you know, addressing questions to, they're not aware they need to sit or stand to speak, and they don't really, so it's helpful, I think, if at the start of the meeting, you just, you know, pretend that your grandmother is in the audience and needs to be given instructions about what, how things are going to happen, and then you're good, so. So that's just a helpful thing to have in your practices. Page forty-five is a sample set of ground rules for a public hearing. I don't know what your rule is, to be honest, on time limits for public hearing, five minutes? Okay, that's pretty standard. And, I think, there've been some, you know, big projects that I've had in municipal meetings on, and where there've been, you know, a hundred people in the audience, and you're thinking, "Okay, five minutes times a hundred, you know, how many hours is this going to take?" But I think it's helpful then to, you know, if you have a big issue in front of you with lots of people in the audience, I think it's helpful to, again, even have a separate set of sort of ground rules at the start, that you go over, and make it clear that, you know, what the issue is is up for discussion at the public hearing, so that you don't get folks that are sort of going off-topic. I don't think you all want to be, you know, here for hours and hours on big controversial projects, so. That's just, again, a helpful thing to keep in mind if you are going to have a big application. On page forty-six of the materials, this is a, and I put this in here just to make the point, this is from some of MMA, the main municipal associations' training materials, about what should happen if you're a planning board member and you miss a meeting, say for an application that's going to take, you know, two or three meetings before it gets finally approved. What happens if you miss a meeting? Are you allowed to, you know, let's say you miss the first meeting when the applicant's engineers made a presentation, and then you show up at the second meeting when there's going to be actual vote on the application? Should you, as a planning board member, be allowed to participate? And what, you know, MMA has this affidavit that, you know, you as a board member are supposed, you know, supposed to fill out, saying, you know, what you did to prepare yourself for the second meeting when you missed the first meeting, but in practice, nobody ever uses this form. But, it just makes the point, because the elements of what should be done are listed in this sample affidavit. If you're that planning board member that missed the first meeting on the application, but shows up for the second meeting on the application and want to participate, you should, again, at the start of the agenda item, you ought to make a disclosure on the record about, "Hey, I missed, you know, the Tuesday planning board meeting last month when the Jones company site plan application was on the agenda, but I went and I watched the videotape of the meeting, and I also looked at all of the materials that got submitted, and then, so I feel that I'm up to speed on the application." And you need to just make that statement on the record, just so it's clear to, you know, everyone, the applicant, the neighbors, your fellow planning board members, that you are actually prepared to participate, because it's not fair if you, again, haven't had the opportunity to review the implication, that the information that was presented at the first meeting. Back on my theme of, you all want to have the same information to base your decisions on, so if you miss a meeting as an individual planning board, it's okay to do some homework and get up to speed, you should stake that on the record. And it's sort of accommodated between, I guess, staff and the chair, if, to keep track of who missed the last month's meeting, and then, when, you know, this agenda item comes up, that's a carryover from the prior meeting, to say, "Oh, well, you know, Stacy missed last month's meeting, and, you know, we should have a search, is she able to participate?"
I have a question, actually, probably for Eric and Evan. With regard to next Tuesday, is there anything that's being voted on, and as a new voting member, are there things that I should either be watching, reading, or should I abstain from votes, given, I don't have the back knowledge of presentations?
I think that, and Catherine can correct me if I'm wrong, I think that next week is workshops, that wouldn't be a concern, it'll actually give you an opportunity to become familiar. And then, do we have a project next week? I think it'll be the first time that project's been reported.
Well, Andrew Drive, which is the second time that it will have been before other...
Do not go back and review material, Andrew Drive. You should be reviewing it as it was in front of us for the very first time.
Yeah.
It's actually good, if for that particular topic, you do not.
So I'm just jumping in.
So, we had the earlier conflict on this item, and it's coming back for review here, and so a fresh presentation, I think, is a, seems a little bit appropriate.
So, you board members, you don't need to do any homework. At least not yet.
Something for the board members is, before every meeting, all go and deliver, deliver the packets for the next meeting, like on Friday or something, so you can like review it over the weekend if you want, but there's usually a lot of material there, so you get to look at it before if you, if you want to, so that way you don't need to fumble through everything at the meeting, but, and it's also available on the website, like the week before.
Just see what else we have here. And this is among the outline, H3, under meeting conduct. Just sort of a little checklist of all the things to be thinking about as you conduct your meetings, about being fair to speakers, allowing public input, you know, controlling the length of your meetings, time limits on speakers, we just talked about participation of board members who miss meetings, application complete. I know some planning boards get, and I don't, and Eric can provide, the members a little overview of application completeness. I'm assuming that that is mostly done by staff, and that an application isn't going to be showing up on a planning board agenda if it's being complete, or at least if staff thinks it's being completed.
And there may be some occasions where people have asked for a waiver on a certain piece of information, and you could also weigh in on that.
Okay. But, but the point is that it may be that staff thinks an application is complete, but you as a planning board think that something is still missing, and that's okay, too, to say, you know, "We, you know, we still want X piece of information, and we're going to, you know, table this application until we receive that piece of information." That is within your purview. Or, you know, the applicant may have, again, as Eric said, asked to waive the submittal of a certain piece of information, and you may, as a board, say, "No, we want that piece of information, that's important to us," and so deny the waiver request, and then the applicant will be required to submit that, so that's a good thing. On the outline, under section six H, talks about, "Take adequate time to make a decision." And what this point is about is, you know, every developer that comes in front of them in this planning board wants their approval yesterday, okay? So, you're going to be feeling a lot of pressure to, you know, approve the application that's in front of you, you know, on Tuesday night. But, if you, as a board, think that, you know, for whatever, you know, reason, that you need more time, that, you know, is perfectly permissible, but it's, I can tell you, to say, you know, "This is a lot of information, you know, we want some more additional information, and we want some time to absorb this, or we want some time to go do a site visit." You should, and it's hard, it's much easier said than done, but you need to take whatever amount of time you need to, to, you know, adequately and thoroughly, comprehensively review the applications that come before you. And yes, every developer is going to tell you, "They needed their approval yesterday," or they're going to lose their financing, or they're going to have something, they're going to lose investors, you know, whatever it is, but the city of Auburn is the one that's going to live with this project, and so if you wanted to write about your fellow residents and make sure that an application has been thoroughly vetted before it gets approved, so if you feel you need, you know, as a board, more time to consider an application, you should take it. Sometimes there may, you know, there may be some legal issue that comes up, and it's perfectly permissible to say, "Look, we need to table this and get an opinion from legal consultants on this," or, you know, whatever it is, but take your time. You're going to feel pressure to read everything that's in front of you that night, but it's okay to, you know, take a pause once in a while.
I could just add, leading up to the planning board meeting, so our submittals for the February meeting are due on Friday, so the following, typically the following Wednesday, we have a meeting in this room with representatives from every city department, and every city department gets to take a look at that application and provide feedback, and then we'll use the questions and information gathered from that meeting to try to inform the staff report, identify any missing information, and try to have that before the planning board meeting. But that process happens every month leading up to the planning board meeting, and it's rare that we come out of that staff meeting and we're not asking for something else for the development.
Yeah, another issue that comes up, and I don't know what Auburn's practices, I've seen it done both ways, but what if a project needs other agency approval? Say they need DEP site location review and approval. Does Auburn Planning Board approve it, subject to a condition that DEP says okay, or does Auburn say, "We want, we're not going to formally approve the Auburn site plan application until the DEP approval is obtained by the applicant?"
So, we have delegated review authority for site loss, stormwater, and traffic, but Natural Resource Protection Act comes up a lot that we don't have the delegated review authority for, and we have approved projects subject to the condition that they receive the DEP permit.
Okay, and does the condition of approval say that provided that the DEP review doesn't impose more stringent or requirements than that city of Auburn approval, so that basically Auburn can look in, revisit its approval if DEP does something sort of funky that wasn't, that city wasn't anticipating?
So, we will, we maybe haven't been as explicit as maybe you would like us to be on that, but what we typically will do is, we'll take the DEP approval and any changes that they require, and if they're substantive, then that would trigger an amendment to the site plan that goes back to the board.
But you're at least monitoring that very issue.
We are, yeah, there could be minor changes required that don't really change the site plan, and or, you know, mitigation off-site was changed or something, and we wouldn't send it back for that.
Yep, okay. Another issue that comes up is the issue of expert versus non-expert testimony, and, you know, let's say there's a traffic engineer who's, you know, here on behalf of the developer, and is saying that this intersection, you know, is not a traffic safety hazard, but you just don't, yeah, he's a traffic engineer, but you collectively, as a board, don't agree with that traffic expert. That's okay? You know, just because somebody is, you know, an expert as far as having some advanced professional training, there's actually a core case on this issue, in the Portland Planning Board from many years ago, the Danforth Shopping Center on Forest Avenue, where the traffic engineer was advocating, you know, behalf of the applicant, saying this intersection was safe, but the planning board didn't think so. And you, as planning board members, get to make credibility determinations, that's part of your role as a judge. So, I just, I put, not that, you know, you're going to be second-guessing every professional who appears in front of you, but my point is that, just because somebody has some professional training, and appears in front of you, you know, doesn't mean that you can't disagree with them. And you don't, the city doesn't necessarily have to have its own expert that says something different than what the applicant's expert says, but the point is that, you know, you get to make credibility determinations about how much you believe that. There are lots of people who are considered experts, but some are better experts than others, I guess that's the point, so. I think it's a common misconception that because, you know, somebody's got some professional training, that you as planning board members have to, you know, agree with that person and accept what they're saying. The short answer is you don't, so. So, I don't know if you had the situation come up about a tie vote, Eric, ever on an application? And, do your rule, your policies and procedures address that situation, remember?
Yeah, I can't think of one, but I was thinking he can recall one or two.
Was that three to three?
Yeah, I think it was...
And that's, when I, I have been tasked to review your policies and procedures, but I will look at that issue, too. I think, the general, if there's not anything specific in your policies and procedures, if there's, say, a tie vote on an application, three to three, that means the applicant doesn't, you know, doesn't have the four votes, which your rules require. But some, some policies and procedures will have a provision that if it's a tie vote, that the application is automatically tabled to the next meeting, you know, so they're different things, but if you have a four-vote majority, I think there's no question that a three to three, tie vote, you know, that the applicant does not then it's burdened and does not get there.
And with a seven-member board, you would never have a...
Yeah, it's not, it's a more of an issue with, again, with smaller boards, you know, my three-board member example, and you have a one-to-one tie, what does that mean, so...
And a three to three fails because we don't have the fourth vote?
Right, yeah, yeah, so. Another thing to talk about, too, just...
I guess just to add, I, the question I have is, you know, map and text amendments, not necessarily a site plan review, but, so that may not be necessarily the same.
Right, that is not, for zoning ordinance, text, and map amendments, the ordinance requires that the planning board conducts, and this is also required by state statute, the planning board has to conduct a public hearing, and then, your zoning ordinance isn't required in the state law, you have to make a recommendation to the city council, you have to do a written report to the city council, which I think staff helps prepare the written report. But, while you all have to go through this process of conducting a public hearing, the city council's not bound by your recommendation. So, if your recommendation is to not approve zoning, certain zoning ordinance amendments, or if it is, or you come to a tie vote, and you can't, you're deadlocked on whether to recommend these changes to the city council, you just, that's your, that's your report, you know, whatever the vote was, there's, you're not sort of approving anything, and you're not, you know, you may not recommend something, and the city council may do it anyways. And that's, I guess, another point to make, too, because this comes up a lot, particularly in smaller communities that the town meeting form of government, where, you know, the planning boards and boards of appeals, you know, are implementing ordinance that have been adopted by town meeting, but it's, and not the, you know, city or town council. been adopted by town meeting, but it's, and not the, you know, city or town council. In Auburn, the city council is the legislative body, so the zoning ordinance of the city of Auburn, that's the policy that's been set by the city council. And you may not like some of the things in the Auburn zoning ordinance, you may not like some of the proposed amendments that you will see as a planning board member, you'll be, you know, participating in the public hearing and making recommendations. But ultimately, you're still required to, at least as far as stuff that's already been included in the zoning ordinance, you're required to follow the zoning ordinance. You don't get to vote against a project because, if, you know, because you don't like it, but it complies with the zoning ordinance, unfortunately. And so if you want to set policy, then you should run for city council. But you all, as planning board members, are sort of, you're to implement the existing zoning ordinance. And again, you get to make comments on proposals to change it, but you don't get to change it yourselves by your individual vote. I don't like this provision of the zoning ordinance, so I'm going to vote against this application. That's an important point to keep in mind, that you're really, you're administering the existing zoning ordinance, but you're not making the policy in the city. You're getting to make recommendations of policy through, you know, these, those text and MAP amendments, but you yourselves are not the final authority on setting policy for the city, so.
I have a question related to the quorum. We do require a minimum of four board members to be present per quorum, and then we require a minimum of four favorable votes to constitute an action by the planning board. We have in the past had offered this to applicants, that if we, we try to keep track of attendance ahead of meetings, so please let us know ahead of time if you won't be able to be at a meeting. But because you need four votes to constitute an action by the board, and let's say we only have four members that are going to be available for that meeting, we've in the past offered the applicant the option to request that their item be pushed to a later meeting date? Is that an acceptable practice?
Absolutely, and I'm just, I'm glad you mentioned that, because if you look at, there, this comes up a lot for boards of appeal, because before variance, if you want, I always say, if you want to say yes to applicants, then you should be on the planning board. If you want to say no, then you should be on the board of appeals. Because unfortunately, the board of appeals is hearing variance applications. And the law of being, and this is set by state statute, is that variances are the exception, not the rule. And so if somebody wants to, you know, the variance is basically a sort of relaxation of a zoning ordinance dimensional requirement. And they're very, should be granted only sparingly, and they're very hard to get. And there are four criteria that apply to variances. And it's, so they're hard to get, and so when a board does not have a full complement, it makes it even harder for an applicant to obtain a variance. So if you look at the, let me just see here. I think I included this, I thought it was in here. In the, in the opening remarks, that's something that we would typically include, is to say, you know, that it's a board, that there are only four board members here tonight, and you as the applicant, you know, need to have four votes in order for the application to be approved. So if you'd like the option to wait until the next meeting, when there might be a fuller complement of board members, I think that is a very, that's a very good practice to have, to employ. Because just, again, it makes it fairer for the applicants to have, you know, a full board hearing the application. It's tough to come in front of, and hear in front of a board, and, you know, there just may be one board member that just doesn't like the application, and that sinks the whole thing. So that's a good practice, and hopefully you're sort of keeping track at each meeting as you raise the issue. Does everyone understand what I'm getting at? It's so that, you know, if there are only four of you, you ought to say something to the applicant, so that they understand they have to get all four of your votes if they're going to get their approval that night.
Is there a time limit that the applicant would know ahead of time?
Well, a lot of times, you know, everybody thought, you know, there were going to be seven of you at the meeting, and then, you know, one member gets sick, one gets held up at work, and so sometimes you don't know until, you know, six o'clock on Tuesday night who's going to actually be there. But when you get, if you know in advance, I think, and I don't know what Eric, how far this came, if you know in advance there are only going to be four members present, do you raise that issue in advance to the applicant?
Yeah, we really would like to know the week before. We're sending out packets on Thursday or Friday, but if you know you can't be there, obviously there's unexpected things that aren't occasionally, but if we have alternates, we can make up for that. But we typically ask the applicant the week before, let them know that that's what's happening, and then we can come into the meeting knowing what they want.
But if, you know, you thought there were going to be all seven of you, and then for whatever reason, only four are able to make it, you ought to, you know, between Eric and staff and chair, you ought to say something to the applicant before they get going, you know, look, there are only four people that are here, do you want to, you know, have your application tabled to the next agenda? It's, again, sort of a fairness thing for them, so. Okay. The next thing I want to cover, which is sort of the main of your existence, but maybe I think you have it, because you have very capable staff, is the written decision requirement. And this is page three of the outline. For all of these various applications, and even for these planning, these zoning ordinance amendments, you have to do a written decision. And because then the next step, if somebody wants to challenge a planning board decision on an application, whether it's a site plan, special exception, or subdivision, the next step is court. Your written decision has to be pretty detailed. It's got to have detailed findings of fact, and then it's got to have conclusions of law which theoretically are matching up the, all the substantive review criteria to the facts that got presented. And I think because you have, you know, very strong staff, you, as board members are not, you know, you may be tweaking an initial draft prepared by staff, but you're not there at the meeting, you know, preparing a written decision. Am I correct in that?
You will typically have that in the staff report, a recommended set of findings, and then the board could make amendments to tweak those if they want to use them.
You're very fortunate. There are a lot of small communities, they don't, you know, have a full-time staff, and they are themselves working through a written decision, and it's not fun for anyone involved. So anyways, just understand that that's a legally required element, and it seems like time-consuming, but it's very important, because if there is a challenge, that's what everybody will focus on. And quite frankly, if you don't do a detailed and upright decision, that's the first thing that will have a superior court send the matter back to you, and they'll say, sorry, you didn't do a detailed and upright decision, start over. And you have the board vote on the written decision at the meeting?
They'll either read it or reference it as, if they agree with the recommendations, that they'll reference it as part of their motion.
And then is the chair sort of authorized to sign afterward, or?
So we will typically use that motion and send out the written decision with a staff signature as what the planning board voted on. In some instances, we'll connect with it with the chair, but not every one of them.
Okay. Just, that's another big thing that's in the case law, is that it has to be the planning board's written decision. It can't be that, you know, the planning board votes to approve the Jones Company subdivision application, and then staff goes back to the office, drafts up a written decision, and sends it out. It has to be affirmatively voted on by the board, that's what I was just going to say. So that's good.
Yeah, that's typically written in there, as well as the, the plan set that was included in the approval process, so it's referenced.
Okay, okay. So that is all that I have for you, but please do say, while we do like questions, I know you have other stuff on the agenda tonight, so I'm going to stay too late and wear out my welcome.
You did a great job for time. I always appreciate that.
Well, it's kind of a dry topic, but, so again, I'm pleased to take questions now, but if you, and you go through these written materials, you have other questions, just get them to Eric, and if he can't answer them, we'll get them to you, we'll get you an answer, it's all part of the string. And don't be shy about taking advantage, I know periodically staff will let you know about trainings offered by MMA. Sometimes you have to go and ask for them, but if it's, if it's planning board specific, you might get something out of it. But also remember that you are, especially if you're a new member, or if you're new, you have a new term, you're required freedom of access act training, and then there's a certificate you got to fill out.
And we are members of the Municipal Association MMA, and you are eligible for your own login if you choose to do that, otherwise we can help you sign up for those, for those trainings. But they have a lot of great manuals online, and a lot of great training to throw at you.
Yeah, so you should, you should have your zoning ordinance, you should have the policies and procedures, and MMA has a planning board manual that may be more information than you ever want to need, but it is, it is a nice resource, if, you know, you get really into it. But you have really good, three really good resources right here in the room.
That manual is more than we will print, but we can get you a link to the PDF, it's about 700 pages. And you should also have that copy, or know how to access the comprehensive plan as well on the website. We'll send you links to all of those documents, and if you specifically want a paper copy of it, we'll have it on our website, other than the ordinance we have given you that I gave you.
Okay, great. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for your, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
You as, Catherine's going to give us an overview of some of the current projects that the board's been working on, but you as new board members are joining the board at a time that is very exciting. It's not easy, it's very challenging, there's a lot of changes to bring our ordinances up to date with the recent comp plan amendments in 2021. The city council's been very ambitious on making changes to accommodate more housing, specifically a lot of those logs, well, Catherine's getting set up. We are seeing a huge response to the recent zoning changes for the T42B zoning district. We have two subdivision applications coming up for you in February that are what I think what most people were hoping for in those adoptions, is the sort of smaller in-town, in-pil lots, taking a single lot, splitting them into three lots, making new lots available for new housing units. There's a number of multifamily projects under construction that are already permitted right now, and there's just, there's a heavy workload, but so really exciting times for Auburn that you as board members will be, will be a part of. Thank you, Sally.
Thank you.
Before we move on to agenda item number three, I'll let Mr. Bergeron know, our vice chair, that I need to leave in about 15 minutes. And rather than stop the meeting at that time to step down as the presiding officer, I'm going to step down as the presiding officer at this point, so Riley is going to take over as presiding officer and walk you through the agenda. And I believe we're on to item three on the agenda, so I'll hand over to staff.
All right, thank you, Riley. Okay, so item three, we have, we're just going to do a quick ordinance overview. So everyone will have a copy of this. The major ordinance that we'll be referring to during our meetings will be chapter 60. Chapter 60, chapter 60 you'll be able to find on the website, just so you can see kind of what it looks like for the new members, and so you can navigate it if you prefer to go over, if you prefer to go over it online. I always do it online, some people prefer the paper copy, I personally never use a paper copy, I only do online. I think that's better. So chapter 60, we have, chapter 60 is the zoning ordinance. We have, for every project, it'll fall into a specific zoning district, so when we review those, we'll review those projects under the particular zoning district that they're For example, if a project is an agriculture and resource protection zone, we want to make sure that it, that it conforms to all of those requirements. For each zoning district, there are certain projects that are allowed or not allowed. The ones that the planning board hears are if they are, if a project is listed as a special exception under a particular zoning district, and that means that it's not particularly, it's not a given that it's allowed by right, but it needs to have that, that review by the planning board in order to be approved. There are some projects that require additional review. For example, if we go to, let's see, chapters next. Okay, so if we go to district regulations here, for example, because we've had a few of these, if you go to agriculture and resource protection districts, and say we're reviewing an application for a solar project, there is an additional ordinance that reviews solar projects that we'll need to look at too. And so there might be several different ordinances applying to a single project, but here's typically where you'll find them.
We'll, we'll try to identify all of those references to other sections in the staff report.
Right.
We certainly don't expect you to leave this meeting knowing every requirement that the ordinance has or where to find it, but I want to give you kind of a brief overview that helps you find the sections that apply to a given project, and as I said, we'll try to identify those. Special exceptions, as Catherine said, and subdivisions are two of the most common project-based reviews that you'll do. And then also ordinance changes are fairly common that require your recommendation. You're the final decision maker on site plans, you're providing the council a recommendation on ordinance changes.
And when you get the, when you get the, the agenda or notice, we will call out, like Eric said, what, what sections we'll be referring to and what will apply here. So it'll be flagged, you don't need to worry about having to go guess which one it is and find that. So special exception is one that we'll look at a lot, site plan review, and when we find, when we make a finding for, or when you all make a finding rather for whether or not you want to approve a project, you would, you, part of that finding would be that the requirements of special, of the special exception review or site plan review are all met. For example, that like protection here, this might be a finding of a decision, protection of adjacent areas against detriment or offensive uses on the site, et cetera. These would all be included as like findings, for example, in making your decisions. See anything for chapter 60? The other chapter that we'll be referring to is chapter two. About administration, that is the chapter that, that covers the planning board and what the rules and regulations are for that, so that's just a good chapter to reference. It also sets out the requirements for workshops, times when we don't have public hearings, quorums. quorums, rules of conduct, all of that. So that's a good refresher to have and it's right in the in the in the code of ordinances.
There's also a copy of it. There's also a copy of the earlier packet from Sally Dyke with the blue binder. A lot of energy there.
That's really all I, I mean, I don't want to go through all of, I think it would be most beneficial for folks if you were just encountering this for the first time to go through and and kind of click through, familiarize yourself with where to find things, but does anyone have any any questions or comments about about this part?
I would just add that some of your reviews include state requirements. So projects that have over three acres of impervious area by less than 10, the state considers those projects of statewide significance and they're required to meet what's called site location of development law. The state's delegated that authority to Auburn based on us adopting ordinance and showing our ability to review those. So sometimes you'll see sections from those other laws pulled into into your reviews. Stormwater and traffic are similar. The state's delegated that that review authority. And subdivisions, a lot of people think of as any split of land. The state law and the city of Auburn define a subdivision as the creation of three or more lots in a five-year period. So a simple split in half does not constitute a subdivision under state law. They also define it as the creation of three or more dwelling units in a five-year period. So you could have the creation of three units in a single building. That's also a subdivision in a five-year period, but there are some exceptions for that that allow municipalities like Auburn with an ordinance that addresses certain criteria to choose whether or not they review those under the state subdivision standards or review them under the local site location, sorry, site plan and special exception requirements, which often makes more sense that we're not doing septic test pits on an urban lot that's connecting to city sewer. Our site plan standards make a lot more sense in a lot of those multifamily projects.
Eric, I have a quick question for you. With regard to like septic design, for example, do we do that in line with what the city has adopted, what the state has adopted, what the EPA has adopted? Like what point, where do we fall on that and should we buy by?
So it's it's not common that you would have to do the actual review of the septic design, but like in the case of a rural subdivision that is going to have septic designs, that each lot is required to show a test fit that meets the standards that would allow for waste water disposal. We also have a licensed plumbing inspector. We'll use their feedback if there's really specific questions to give you advice on whether or not they think they meet the standards, but generally you're either confirming that there's adequate ability to connect to the public sewer system or that there's the ability to have a septic system on the lot, the soils allow for it, the site evaluator has has assurance of that, but you're not typically looking at the specific septic design for a project. There might be some exceptions where that's included though.
But from what we're like, from a soil perspective, you know, I don't know, do we, do we usually follow our own guidance or is that the state's guidance or where does that usually fall?
So throughout the majority of the city, it's strictly the state guidance. The main subsurface wastewater disposal rules, the only place that we have additional rules that are purely local would be in the Lake Auburn watershed where there would be more information and I would say potentially even a design for something like that. And that's something that you'll have to become familiar with what the differences are, but throughout the state, there's nine to 15 inches of soils required between the the ground surface and whatever the limiting factor is underneath. It could be wastewater, oh, sorry. Seasonal high groundwater, could be ledge, could be a lens of clay that's impermeable. But there's nine to 15 inches required in the Lake Auburn watershed. There are 36 inches required, which is significantly more and doesn't exist on a lot of sites, but that is something that the planning board has already provided a recommendation on changing that. That'll eventually go to city council probably in March, but if they make any changes to that, of course, a lot of that come back to you as a board for additional information.
If there are any more questions, let's move on to item number four, an overview and summary of current and ongoing planning board projects. Give them to everyone on the staff.
Okay, thank you, Riley. Okay, so like, like Eric said, we have been, the planning board has been, had a side of really full plate over the past several months and some of the current and upcoming ongoing projects have been in the works for a while. There's a lot of, there have been past meetings about them. There is a lot of hours and hours of information that have gone into, that have gone into these projects. And so it's it's a pretty big task, especially for the new members here, to be stepping into. Good news is that there is, there is a ton of information on the website that from past meetings, there are reports that kind of give you some of this background. The one major one that, one major one that we're thinking of right now is resolved 0609, 062022, an order 151 dash 1107 2022. And that is a considered amended zoning or a considered text amendment in the Auburn agriculture and resource, in resource protection zone. What is currently before the council or, sorry, before the planning board is to consider and deliver a recommendation to the council by no later than March 20th on whether or not to remove the income requirement in order to build a residential, a residence in in the agriculture and resource protection zone and also whether to remove the strip zoning limitations in that area. And there is a specific, there is a text amendment that you can see. So you'll be able to actually look at the language before you and that is what you'll be voting on. Where we have, where we are right now is part of that directive from the council was to get, was to receive advice from the Sustainability, I said R B S, Sustainability and Natural Resources Management Board on on this, on this topic. And at the last meeting in December, December 13th, they gave the recommendation. So in this upcoming workshop, which will be this coming week, we will have for you, especially for the new members, their recommendations. So you can read what they, what they have to say. And this will just be a workshop to to think about the more decided last time that they want to workshop in trying to decide what their answer is about whether or not to remove this income standard. They also want to workshop what could be an alternative, a viable alternative to the income requirements if it were to be removed. So that's one thing that we'll be thinking about. And what, and something that we're doing to to think about that is to set up, is to really set up like a list of of particular values that the land has, what what maybe should or shouldn't remain protected through that Ag, through that Ag zone designation. But that is an ongoing project. This will not be a public hearing. It's only going to be a workshop. So a chance to to talk, discuss, come up with a way to move forward. But ultimately, council needs a recommendation from the planning board no later than March 20th. So we have a few more meetings to do that.
We can email this to you. So each one of those dates, there's a corresponding agenda packet on the city website that you can look back to that information. And if you really wanted to see the discussion at any one of those, there's a YouTube video on the city of Auburn's YouTube page where the actual presentation is appearing in the discussion.
Oftentimes we use a lot of maps and, you know, the maps that you're looking at right there just to kind of explain what we're looking at. The blue dotted line is, represents the the Lake Auburn watershed. In this particular resolve, that area is not being included. That includes Ag land. So that's not in the consideration. And then any of the darker green areas, those are the essentially what's the Ag zone. Those are just land, land types that you're looking at. They're not necessarily, it's in the Ag zone. All of it's Ag zone, but it's just different land types, information that that you're looking at on this particular, on this particular map, but just to kind of explain a little bit of what you're looking at for context.
Yeah. Yeah, this, this map is a map of developable lots. So the, what you're seeing is the size of the lots in the, in the Ag zone. And so really I think the big focus is going to be, just because a lot of this area in around Lake Auburn will be excluded, I think the south of Auburn is gonna be likely a larger focus there. But of course, it's the, the order is to look at the whole of the zone. Does anyone first have any questions about about that? It's a lot to, having to go into it is also, there's also a lot here.
I think this is a good chance just for that really brief overview and we'll get into it at the next meeting.
Great. Okay. So that is, that's the first one. We'll be talking about this next meeting. Okay, here's the text of the order. Okay. The next one that's also going to be a workshop at this upcoming meeting is to discuss public safety facilities in Auburn. So our previous meeting, so February 7th, council passed a moratorium ordinance. So putting a moratorium on all new development of, or on on this topic and for a certain number of days. November 15th, we held the first workshop to discuss the current definitions in the ordinance, how the ordinance describes public safety facilities, are, is our ordinance adequate to cover everything that might fall under that? Like, and ultimately, I think we're, the planning board is coming to seeing that our ordinance is pretty, it does not sufficiently cover a detailed description of what these different kinds of public safety uses are. It does not cover specifically dispatch facilities or correctional facilities, et cetera. So, so our task here is to, to decide what, if anything, does our ordinance need to change and have that and make that recommendation? Decide also, or determine also what zones should these different kinds of uses be allowed in? And should there be extra criteria for specific kinds of uses?
I think we've kind of broken it down for the meeting next week to, people may have different thoughts about what standards need to be for a large correctional facility versus a dispatch for a police department or a fire department, that kind of thing, or a call center or 911. So we'll break those down next week and decide if the board thinks that we need to include definitions for each of those components individually within the ordinance and whether or not there should be different zones or different standards that apply each of them.
Okay, this one has, the planning board has worked on several, several zoning text and map changes over the past several months that have, that have been around the topic of expand, of Auburn's goal of expanding housing opportunity. A big one that that we, that has been circulating a lot has been the creation and application of, of form-based code in Auburn as a new kind of, as a new zone and and applying into different areas. So one that happened pretty recently was the creation of the zone called T dash 4.2B. It's a form-based code which essentially is different from how I would describe it to somebody calling on the phone. Is it, is it, it does not focus as much on like setbacks, having, having a building setback from the road as to the form of the lot. So it allows for a higher density of development. It also allows for different mixed uses. Usually in in some of this other kind of zoning, it's, it says things like single-family houses are allowed here, single and duplexes, and then that's kind of it. So this is something that the planning board had a hand in in drafting. Recently also, they applied it, they voted to apply it to the Court Street area, a big piece of the downtown city core. Ongoing workshops that we've had that, but we have not held any votes on and right now there are no plans for it to be on an upcoming agenda, although it's, it hasn't been put to rest either. Are applying, applying this form-based code, new zoning to alternative area, other areas in the city. So we have, this is the area that that planning board has already voted to apply it to, Court Street area. We've also workshops applying it to areas, what we call A through D, just to identify different land areas of the city. Just click through them real quick so you can see what we're talking about. This is Victory Road area here. This swath here is, is a piece of New Auburn and South Main Street. Anything else you have?
Just one other thing, the, so the form-based code, T 4.2B, you guys have your, the chapter 60, there's a lag in from codification to print and actually electronically as well. So that's something that staff kind of tracks until codification and everything gets done. There might be a two-month lag in between that. So if you go look in your ordinance and you'll, you know, I cannot find 24.2B because it's not in there yet and we could provide specific language to that, but just, just to be aware of that, have situational awareness.
We could send a link out, actually. We're gonna be sending you other things, but we can send a link out to the final version that was adopted to council. See you have it before it gets printed.
Right. And you can see here, this table shows some of these other form-based code districts. They're arranged from like least urban to most urban. T 4.2 is there. T, T dash 4.2B is very, is very, it's, it's slightly on the less urban side, but it falls kind of between 241 and 242. But that's where that would likely be later on.
So a quick, I think, did you have a question?
Yeah. Just the links and that will be sent out. Will that be sent to our personal email as a new board member or will be given a email?
That will be your personal. I don't think that planning board gets the emails, do they?
Yeah, if somebody wants one, we could ask about that, but typically they, there'll be an email that you give to us. But it is something we could ask about if you, if you'd rather have that separated from your personal.
I was gonna ask that when the lawyer, when the lawyer was here, because I do, obviously my emails are very business and then I have personal email and a business email.
my emails are very business, and then I have personal email and a business email, and I think it would be beneficial to have a city email.
Okay, we can, we can look into that. The other part of it is that if you're, if you're emailing a city staff person, then we'll be able to provide that document.
You don't get the emails, because it goes to your jump one, sorry.
If you're emailing a city staff person, it is ever a FOA request, FOA request, we can provide that document, and we would ask you if somebody requested it for any other communications that you had with other board members, members related to a topic, but we wouldn't take every email that you have and sort through them, so that's, that's a bit of a trip.
Yeah, I wouldn't like that.
We wouldn't either. But we can look at whether or not it makes sense for us to provide an email that maybe transfers to your account. So we could, we could treat those if we needed to on the city email.
Yeah, no, I just don't even want to deal with this.
So another ongoing topic that, that planning board will likely encounter again, because we have been, over the past few months, are issues and questions concerning ordinances and regulations around Lake Auburn, including septic system standards within the watershed. You have these best management practices for, for land use in the area, zoning map changes in the Lake Auburn watershed, too. So, one that we then, that the, that the board voted on, but it has not gone to council yet, is, oh, where, what the heck? I love that, is updating section 60-1066 phosphorus control for any new building or structure. Well, actually, they have voted on that one, and that changed this past year. That regulation was to require a phosphorus plan for, for any new structure in the Lake Auburn watershed, 200 square feet or more. So that was a change from, I think, 500 square feet. Another that is, has not been voted on yet, is the septic system requirements, and that's what we were just talking about with the change from, from the septic standard that, that requires 36 inches of well-drained soil below ground level to the limiting factor. And the, what the, the board voted on, but the council has not yet, is changing that to a standard that, that allows for bringing in material, striking the well-drained soil part of it, still having 36 inches ultimately to the limiting factor, but having kind of a different septic design in the watershed.
What we've done in the past, really, is use this standard to determine which lots are buildable. Either you had the 36 inches of soil naturally existing on site, or you didn't, and if you didn't, it's not buildable. We've been criticized for a long time about that not being as transparent or as easily understood as it could be. And based on the report that the council authorized, FB Environmental to do, as well as some previous watershed management plans from 2010, that LOPAC had done, had identified a number of things that we could do to make those more easily understood. Also, that putting these systems in well-drained soils, setting them below the organic layer that sits on the top of the surface, is disposing of wastewater in a way that, you know, drains really quickly, it goes away, nobody can see it. But it's not slowly moving through a finer soil, and really being treated before it enters groundwater. So the planning board had a really challenging task of figuring out, maybe it's a great recommendations from David Roke, a retired state soil scientist, as well as FB environmental. Okay, so is there a better way to treat wastewater? And I think we found one that's much better. But that is going to make more lots in the watershed buildable. And the report was pretty clear that increasing development lots in the watershed is not good for the lake. So then we looked at ways to, if we can treat wastewater better, and we can still limit development to the same or less than what was already allowed, how do we do that? And the planning board made a recommendation that any of the one-acre minimum lot sizes in the watershed be changed to three-acre minimums, in conjunction with the septic change, and it actually results in a net reduction in the overall number of buildable lots, and we get the better wastewater treatment. And the phosphorus standards became more stringent. We increased setbacks for agricultural uses for resources. And last night at the council, the, the council asked for an order, and I'll go to council soon, that will probably come back to you guys, do we take the agriculture resource protection zone portions of the Lake Auburn watershed, and recognize that this is more of a resource protection zone and not an agricultural zone? That the purpose of keeping that land undeveloped is for protecting Lake Auburn, not for agriculture. Farms can actually be detrimental, and we may, you'll be asked to consider straight prohibition of housing within the Lake Auburn watershed and the ag zone, most likely if the council votes to do that, and call that a resource protection zone rather than an ag zone. So there's a lot of pieces to it, and the planning board recommendation was contingent on reducing the, increasing the lot size to reduce the density, but also instituting a septic system inspection program that will guarantee that systems are functioning better, that currently we don't go back after they're, after they're approved and inspected on installation. But this would be inspections every five years and upon sale, and we'll be working with the Lake Auburn watershed protection commission to see how, how we implement that, and we're really hoping that the protection commission takes a much more active role in enforcing those protection ordinances. Because right now, that burden falls entirely on the city of Auburn, and most of them doesn't expend any money towards protecting the water source that serves both cities, so I think there's an opportunity for that.
So can I just ask, like, a huge favor about this? Because this has been, like, in front of us, like, a couple of times. And a lot of what you've just said, like, I obviously, you know, witnessed and experienced through the years. So when we have this on the next agenda, can we have, like, a succinct, boarded outline of exactly what we're going to address when it comes to this? Because you did a great job just outlining everything that we have just experienced. So what are the nuances that we're going to, to have to actually address? Like, so that's, I don't want to get mired in where we were, what we've experienced, I want to know what we're actually going forward and addressing in the next meeting. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, and there's probably a couple of meetings that will ask some of the, the new board members to look ahead to that.
Yeah, it was just a nice overview, for sure.
Yeah, a succinct overview that we can skim through. But then, like, a succinct, like, this is exactly what we're going to review, this is what we're doing, and this is what we're moving forward on.
Maybe like a list of kind of prior, the prior motions that were voted on, that kind of thing, and then what, yeah, I think that would be.
Just our forward progress.
Right, yeah, right. All right, that is, that's that, and I think.
I think the Andrew Drive one is next, but I think, you know, we talked a little bit about that. We don't want to talk at all about the merits of that. This will be a brand-new hearing. We had an issue with a conflict of interest that we incorrectly informed a board member about, so the resolution to that is to have a brand-new hearing, not talk about the past. The board looks at this as if they never had before, so.
I had a question about that. As we were going through our legal review, is the, to avoid specifics, is there, is there going to be the same representation at the meetings? I think former members are stripped for a year after serving from addressing the board, right?
For 12 months, based on the policies and procedures or the state law?
Yeah, and maybe our pack of us, when we're reviewing it, that said that any serving member, anyone that served would have, would not be able to address the board for 12 months.
Okay, we can look at that, and we'll make sure that is advised based on that.
I'm sorry.
I thought it was very specific to the situation. I don't, I don't think that's in the policies and procedures, but here's the page where you can make sure that some of it's. We can check on this outside, outside of the, to.
If I can find it, I'll bring it back up.
Then the last one, I think Catherine slipped through the slideshow, is the Auburn Suburban Baseball and Softball Project. The city of Auburn offered to, because it meets a lot of the goals of our comp plan, they offered to play, pay for the preparation of the permit applications for Auburn Suburban Baseball and Softball. The Auburn Suburban Baseball Softballs are working with Jones Associates, and you'll see an application coming up for that one within the next few months.
Is right at the bottom of page 38, no, the 39 was what Tom ran. With that, that staff's aware, I think we can move on to item number five on the agenda. Is, do we have any section of questions? I think this is probably set up for any of the new board members have questions for staff, but.
I've been fed through a fire hose in the past two and a half hours.
And feel free to contact one of us if you want, if you have specific questions, we can do one or two board members at a time, not three, or else that's a public meeting, and go over these specific ordinance sections or any, not project-specific, just the ordinance and any other requests.
Thank you. I guess I have a question for staff. Is this, is there no section for public comment, because it's a special meeting of the planning board?
We didn't intend for there to be public comment. If he as a board wanted to, I guess he could, somebody could make that motion so I can have it, but we didn't schedule public comment for tonight.
Is there?
Do you guys want to talk?
I don't know. Is there a, well, I don't want to make a motion to, for the open public comment at the next meeting. If there's no motions, then I guess we'll move on to item six on the agenda, which is adjournment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.